We'll call tonight's meeting to order. Roll call, please, Lisa.
This is Slippa.
Here.
This is Burnett.
Here.
Ms. Lynch.
Here.
Mr. Freitor.
Here.
Mrs. Proctor. Mr. Rose.
Here.
Mr. Shreck.
Here.
Mr. Smith. Mr. Tuttle.
Okay, let's stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, there are no executive sessions to make note of. Any public comment? None, so we'll move to approval of minutes. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following minutes of the regular board meeting of May 20th, 2019, and the committee of the whole meeting of June 17th, 2019, and I need a motion.
Move.
Jeff, in a second.
Second.
Melissa. Thank you. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to committee reports and curriculum. Melissa Burnett, please.
Yes, approval of the second and final reading of Schedule J, textbook adoption. Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the second and final reading of the Schedule J, Textbook Adoption, Wilson Foundations, and I so move.
Second, please.
Second.
Thank you. Paula? Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The first reading of Schedule J, textbook adoption, matters understanding human anatomy and physiology.
Okay, we'll move on to buildings and ground. Frank, Shreck, please.
Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the mechanical and technical planned service proposals with Johnson Controls, and I so move.
We need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Melissa. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the selection of McClure Company to develop an investment-grade audit based on their response to the district's request for qualifications for a guaranteed energy-saving project. The purpose of the investment-grade audit is to develop final pricing and savings for the possibility of entering into a guaranteed energy-saving agreement, and I so move.
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Paula. Are there any questions or comments?
I'd like Dave to just kind of give a rough overview of that.
We put an RFQ out about a month ago for companies that do these performance energy-savings projects. We reviewed, we had to submit their RFQs in which then we selected McClure to do this. And this company specializes in projects that would be HVAC, electrical, building occupancy-type things within our school. So we're focused, the main focus of this right now is for both high schools here. We're at 20 to 25 years on some of the equipment by the time that this would roll out. So that would be the focus of this project. It's paying for a lot of the work to be offset by your utility savings and things along that line.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. In Dalewood's absence, I'll read the approval of the inclusion of West End Elementary School and Cochranton Elementary School in the community eligibility provision. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the inclusion of West End Elementary School and Cochranton Elementary School in the community eligibility provision, and I need a motion. Jeff, in a second. Thank you, Melissa. Questions or comments?
I have some real reservations with this, though I didn't have them at the committee meeting last week. I've been arguing with myself, I've asked some other people, and I'll preface my remarks with any child that needs a lunch, deserves a lunch, can't afford a lunch, deserves it. And I have no problem if their parents get that. But what are we teaching these kids, these children, when everybody gets a free lunch? Now, when I come in here, I come past Channel Rock, other things, other places of business, and they have, industry is hiring. If we provide a free lunch for everybody, how do you justify that? I can't justify it if I'm the one getting the free lunch, and I can't justify it if I'm the one that, for lack of a better word, doesn't deserve it. When do these kids and their parents, if they can afford it, become responsible for the save, before their lunches? Now, I was told last week that this doesn't cost us anything. Well, this whole room is blessed by the fact that nobody must pay taxes to the state because I do. This is not free, and if we're going to do it, the child should have earned the right to it or earned it, one way or the other. So I'm gonna vote no, though I don't really like that, and if I voted yes, I would like it even less. So I guess that's all I have.
I have something to say in regards to that as well. I'm gonna approve it and wholeheartedly because we're here for children. It's Crawford Central School District, and our mission and vision statement is to support children and families, and my children were in need of free lunch, and you wouldn't even know it when you sit in here. You can't tell who needs it, and you can't tell who doesn't. And so I wholeheartedly support it, and I commend us all for being part of it and being part of the solution to some social economic problems, social economic problems.
Anybody else? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries five to one. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the Schedule K, 424 diesel fuel bids, and I need a motion.
So move.
Jeff, second?
Second.
Melissa. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Jeff Rose, finance, please.
Activities here. Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following financial activities. The directors report for May, the financial statements, and the payment of bills, and I so move.
I need a second.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
2019-20 general fund budget. Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the adoption of the 2019 through 2020 general fund budget in the amount of $63,594,558 as presented on PDE-2028. A copy will be made part of the minutes, and I so move.
And I need a second.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Yes. I guess I'm gonna keep this pretty simple. I said what I had to say last week. How can we vote to increase taxes when two of our schools are in the bottom 15 percent and we have no, absolutely no one from the community here looking to nail our high to the wall? That's all I have to say.
I think I'd like to say something as well. Tom, you said something fantastic in the last committee meeting, and you said that children, we live in a blessed area, definitely, where we can provide children more for a relatively good bang to our buck. But you also mentioned that just because we have testing that changes the end goal point consistently, so we're always trying to catch up to the latest ratings and rankings, doesn't mean that we don't have fantastic schools and fantastic school systems. Also, you mentioned, which really hit me, the fact that if the children are not performing, that means we should actually spend more money on the children, trying to get them to a point which is equivalent on the school systems. So although I am gonna vote against the budget because it's included in the tax increase and the budget are hand in hand, I support your efforts in reducing expenditures, but I don't think that the budget has anything to do with the child outcome. The child outcome changes all the time, depending on the child's situation at home, depending on the child moving in and out. There's a flux and a flow that the teachers are always trying to get a hold of. So I commend you for trying to catch the kite by the tail.
Well, I just wanna, Paula, I think what we wanted to point out, Frank, in that scenario that you're referring to is what they're talking to is about categories of kids who need additional help. That isn't something that is just new to Crawford Central. That is something that is a part of American education. When kids in certain categories don't perform as high as others, they look for, and what they're asking us to do is to add extra support there, no different than a kid who's struggling, who can't eat, to add extra support there. At the same token, we've mentioned, we've heard a lot of mention of that, but nobody mentions the fact that West End School was a, received an award this year for being an outstanding performing elementary school. Nobody mentioned the fact that our graduating seniors this year brought in over $3 million in scholarships and award money. So, you know, Frank, there's one way to look at the system, and there are many other ways to look at the system. So I tend to look at the system in ways that we are doing a great thing here at Crawford Central. We are producing kids who are going out, doing well. We had the first signing, as you know, at the Career Tech. This is the first year we had employees come in and sign kids like they were receiving scholarships, and we set it up that way as academic improvement. So there are a lot of great things going on. Yes, you wanna know my thought about it? Maybe the government should be out of education a little bit more, and it might be better. But the idea that, you know, we have certain things that we have to fulfill? We do. And we do our best to do it, and we work hard at doing it, and these folks, our teachers, our central administration, those folks work extremely hard at meeting the needs of kids. And as Paula has said, in such a way, there are so many variables out there we have to chase, we can't get them all, but we do our best. So that's why we do have to do things like feed kids who sometimes don't have a meal. Nobody's talking about the fact that we send home meals on the weekend. We have a whole program. Nobody's talking about the fact that we send kids to summer camp. Nobody's talking about the fact that we have tons of kids who sit and do, come to us all summer, that we continue to educate, that we had a STEM camp going on last week. We have tons of things we do to meet the needs of kids. So sometimes, one variable, Frank, I'll leave it, I'll leave at this and I'll shut up. You know what? If my doctor just judged me by my weight, I'm glad he takes some other measurements.
Well, I'm certainly gonna respectfully disagree with Paula down there. Some of what you said, I certainly agree with, and as you've heard me say, get the government out of education, which would be the first thing to get rid of PDE, and the second thing would get rid of the school board association.
I didn't know if I wanted to go that far. I was thinking more of Washington, D.C.
And beyond that, there is no doubt we have, I'm gonna say, overachieving group of kids in both high schools, and they do well. They do well in school, they do well when they go on. We also spent a terrific amount of money on the special needs kids. I do say we neglect the kids in the middle. Basically, well, I had a daughter, a granddaughter. She was a valedictorian at Cochranton. She took some tests three times. Even if she got 105 percent the first time she took it, she had the privilege of taking it twice more until the rest of the kids maybe passed it or got a grade that was sufficient. So no, we do a lot of good things, but I'm not gonna say, well, there's 505 school districts in Pennsylvania, am I right?
Five hundred.
Well, 500, I don't care.
499, I think we lost.
Oh, 499. 10 percent of either one's close. We are judged the same as the other 500 or 498. Now, whether we do some things right or not, the kids from West End are, when they reach seventh grade, they're going to the middle school, and when they reach ninth grade, they're going to the high school. What's happening there?
If you're asking me to question, I don't wanna get into that.
I don't care.
I think great things are happening there. I think, I think our middle school does a fantastic job. I think Scott Lynch is one of the most energetic principals that we have going, and he tries all sorts of things. Next year, as a matter of fact, he's bringing in a program called Web, where everybody belongs, where he's looking at trying to integrate all kids into feeling like they belong as a part of the culture. Those are things, and when you talk about middle school, Frank, you just can't also look at grades. We know that those middle school kids have certain needs that they need emotionally, socially, and that's why we even have middle school concepts to go on. And so we spend a lot of time also meeting the needs of those things that are happening for kids at that age level. So what's happening there? I think there's a lot of great things that are happening there. If we look at the outcome, the end of the journey, if we stood on that stage, and I know you sat in Cochranton, if you look at what those kids got at the end of the journey, both schools, well over millions of dollars in scholarships and funds awarded to those young men and women who did an outstanding job, and I believe that 14 percent of our senior class was going on to the military to serve our country. So there are a lot of great things happening, and I just wanna make that clear.
And Jeff?
My son's in the middle school, and he's thrived there. He's gotten, you have to take, there's a good person in this room and there's a bad person in this room. There's a bell-shaped curve everywhere you go of good versus bad, and we took some lumps in certain situations, we took some successes in others. It all balances out till a well-balanced child. My daughter's in Needville Area High School, same thing there. There's never gonna be a perfect euphoria and utopia. So I think we're doing pretty, pretty well, and I commend the teachers and, my children went through Meason Hill. I bussed my oldest son up to Cathedral Prep. He failed out of prep and found a home in Needville Area High School. So I think that we underestimate what we've got here.
Okay, so I take a little different approach to this. I don't think that we should be looking at this in, you know, somebody making decisions whether or not we're doing, we're being successful or unsuccessful, and therefore either rewarding or not rewarding our school district with, you know, passing the budget which our administration has recommended. I think we need to look at this like we're, like what we should be doing, which is balancing a budget and running a business. Our administration has proposed to us a budget in a very difficult set of circumstances. First of all, we are facing expenses that are much higher than the tax increase that we're looking at, but our administration has reduced that tax increase by cutting a lot of things and cutting expenses. At the same time, it's the worst of both worlds, because we're also going to have to increase taxes, but much less than we would if we simply matched the expenses which are being presented to us. I think that it's this board's responsibility to listen to the administration after they've done a lot of hard work and to give, and authorize the budget which they are giving to us, which will only make us an even better school district. I think we are a very, very good school district, and that we should listen to our administration under these circumstances. That's all.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, we have a first and a second, all in favor. Aye. Opposed? No.
No.
Motion carries four to two.
Motion fails.
Motion fails.
Motion fails. Under 508, you need five. So you have to, by law, you have to pass a budget, so you need to consider something else or revisit this question.
All right, revote the budget. I'll vote for it, but I will not vote for the tax increase.
Mr. Shreck, you're making a motion for reconsideration?
Yeah, me to do that.
Well, it takes someone who voted no.
I'll vote to reconsider it or whatever.
Motion to reconsider.
A motion to reconsider.
And we need a second for that?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
That's just to put it back on the table.
And now we reread it again?
That's correct.
Okay. Go ahead, Jeff.
Resolved that the Board of School Directors of the Crawford Central School District hereby approves the adoption of the 2019-2020 general fund budget in the amount of $63,594,558 as presented on PDE-2028, a copy of which will be made a part of the minutes, and I so move.
Okay, and I need a second.
Second.
Melissa. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? No. Motion. We just have one?
You just did the same thing.
Yes, we need a roll call.
Okay. Okay. Roll call, Lisa.
So if you say no, yeah, that's what we're doing. We're gonna redo the budget.
Okay. All right.
All right, sounds good, Roy.
Mr. Shreck?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Freitor?
Yes.
Ms. Lynch?
No.
Ms. Burnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Slippa?
Yes. So it carries five to one. Okay.
Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following real estate tax levies for the fiscal year 2019 and '20. Crawford County at 53.10 mils, which is an increase of .49 mils. Mercer County at 89.91 mils, which is a decrease of 2.11 mils, and I so move.
Second.
Ross? All in favor?
Before, before.
You wanna have some comment?
I would like Minister Senate to address what would occur if we approved the budget but did not approve the tax increase.
Well, it'd be difficult for you to approve the budget because the tax increase and the budget are hand in hand.
Right.
So if you vote down the tax increase, you've really cut back and voted down the budget because you don't have the money to pay for the budget you just passed.
Thank you.
And we need five.
And so you need five.
Okay, so we have a first and we have a second. Do we wanna do roll call, just to make it clear? All right.
Mrs. Slippa?
Yes.
Ms. Burnett?
Yes.
Ms. Lynch?
No.
Mr. Freitor?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Shreck?
No.
And fails, so your options are to reconsider this or come up with another motion that would be sufficient to pay for the budget you just passed.
I'll make a motion, we take it out of our fund balance.
What's the difference? Yeah. The difference?
We're using internal money.
So in other words, the difference between the current budget and the increase?
Guy, go ahead on that one.
Can I take a quick recess? Can I take a quick recess and talk to my cabinet, please?
Just wanted to say that the motion that I, we want clarification on the motion, is that Director Shreck asked that the remaining balance be taken from the, the remaining gap would be taken from the fund balance. I believe the amount, I see Guy frantically plugging numbers, I believe that amount is around 204,000, don't hold me to the exact amount. I think that's what that represented. We would have to take that from a fund balance, or either that is, or we could cut an English teacher, push some numbers higher.
That was, that's one scenario.
Two scenarios, take it out of the fund balance. I believe the millage would be the same guy. I'm struggling here with it.
52.61, 92.02 is the best.
So Crawford County would be?
52.61.
52.61. And the Mercer County would be?
Say 92.02.
Which means that we would take about $204,000 out of the fund balance. I just want you to understand the impact of the motion, right, and what we would do.
That's what I was hoping we would do as well.
Yeah, but this isn't mine.
We have until July 1st to pass a budget, correct?
No, we have till June 30th, really.
June 30th.
Right. But we don't have another meeting scheduled.
Right.
And I mean, if that's what we'd like to do, then, well, I'm just giving you the impact of motion. There's been a motion on the floor. I think it needs to be properly.
There needs to be a, there needs to be a.
There was a suggestion. There was a suggestion that you take it out of the fund balance. You took a recess in order to calculate that. I think we have new numbers based on that, so the motion really should be that the, when you read the millage amount for Crawford County, I believe it's now 52.61, and Mercer County is at 92.02. So in making the motion, that's the motion you would make.
Right, that's what, exactly. We wanted to clarify what the motion meant.
Well, why don't we put a motion on the floor, and then we can.
All right.
You wanna ask your question?
When do you want me to ask my question?
Question about the motion, or you're making the motion?
You want to make the.
A question about the figures.
So you want clarification on those figures before you make the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. The only question I have is why, if we raised taxes, did Mercer County's millage go down? Now, if we put it, leave it the same because their assessments went up, we, you lost me on that one, Guy.
I can't help you other than I have to explain to you the way the old counties work. This comes off of this number between this, this goes back on here to this, to leave it the way it is.
All right, well, I'll make a motion to coincide with the figures you've put up there.
Yeah, if you, I don't know that you wanna go to this, but it has a rebalancing of assessments, and when it does that, it gives you 52.61, 92.02 before anything is added or subtracted.
No wonder I don't know what the hell I'm doing up here.
So with this, there's no tax increase, correct?
That's, there's no tax increase for either district, correct? It's the same as it was for both of them last year.
Thank you.
So I would, I would like to add that this is not a new idea. This is something that we have talked about, not only recently, but in the past few months, about our fund balance, and that we have heard from our business director, and he has advised us with regard to what he feels is a sound management of the fund balance, and I am not enthusiastic about going into the fund balance at this time.
I, and I am not in favor of it either. As a matter of fact, I just feel that if we don't raise the millage and we go into the fund balance, we are putting this district in jeopardy, particularly even for next year, that it's gonna compromise programs, and I'm not willing to do that.
So we're having a discussion, but do we have a motion? So I guess.
No, we didn't. So we need.
Should I restate the motion?
Yes.
Yes, restate the motion.
Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following real estate tax levies for fiscal year 2019 and '20. Crawford County at 52.61 mils, no change. Mercer County at 92.02 mils, also no change, and I so move.
Do you have to add pulling the money from the fund balance or not? Okay. Okay.
In a second.
Uh, before we vote, I have a question, will we need to readdress the prior motion?
No.
No. Okay, we have a first and a second, any more comments? Let's take roll call again, Lisa.
Mr. Schrecks?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Frather?
No.
Ms. Lynch?
Yes.
Ms. Burnett?
I guess, um, we have to approve something, right, tonight?
Yes. Or schedule another meeting.
Well, no.
No?
Yes.
Mrs. Spaliva?
No. Motion does not carry. So at this point, do we, do we-
I would like to ask about the dynamics of scheduling another meeting. Do we have enough time to put out public notice to schedule a meeting by the end of this week?
No. Depends on the ability to get to the newspaper, but it's twenty-four hour notes. I, I'm not-
I think we can do that then.
But I think, Ross, you're going to wind up with the same people here, that's what I mean.
I don't know. Um, there are a lot of people that aren't sitting here today.
Well, Glenn, did they, because they're away?
That's-
That's why, they're, they're, they're on vacation.
It may be possible that we get people on the telephone.
Well, I want to clarify just one thing that Mr. Senate said, he's twenty-four hour notice, but that does not mean that Tribune can get that in the paper in twenty-four hours. Because they only publish, um, public notices, I think, twice a week.
Well, I guess what I'm, I'm going to ask the board is what does, what does it take to pass the boards, pass the budget? Where, where, it takes, I know it takes five votes, but-
Funny, Ross.
But we're at zero and it's not passing. I mean, I mean, I, so it makes no sense for me to make more cuts to the budget, right? Because it would be going further, so we're at zero and it's not passing, what would it take to get a budget passed, then?
Right, now you're, uh, I think Frank is proposing that we go two hundred and five thousand dollars into the fund balance.
I think it's about two hundred and four thousand.
Okay. So-
I didn't really, I had no idea what the dollar figure was.
Okay, well, that's, I think, rather-
That's what the business had, yeah.
Right, well, that's, but that's why I said it, so that everybody understood what numbers-
But that was not my figure, that was-
Well, maybe you'll find compromise if you went less into the fund balance.
Would the board be willing to go a hundred thousand into the fund balance and allow the administration to make up the other hundred thousand?
When you say make up the other hundred thousand, how do you mean?
I would, I would have to go into the budget, I mean, I'm going to have to take my team, and we're going to have to look in and find a hundred thousand dollars worth of cuts.
Or raise taxes.
Or raise taxes, or raise taxes, you're right. Thank you, Tim. Or raise taxes just to a hundred thousand, which would be, Guy, you would have to do the math on the millage. So you could, I, I hear what you're saying is that you would, you would have to split. Would you be willing to split?
I'm not splitting, is that what you're asking? I'm not splitting.
And I'm not splitting the other way.
I don't know what to do, I'm at zero and willing to split.
Well, I'm-
I feel like I'm at all stakes, okay, who's up next, other than-
Well, give me time to think, Tom.
What about a phone call, to the board member that you said you needed?
Go ahead.
I was waiting for him to text me, we left him a message. Frank, I'm sorry, you were-
Well, I needed time to think.
Okay.
You put a for sale sign on East End and I'll go with you.
Well, Frank, I'm not going to, I'm not going to put a, um, I'm not going to put a for sale sign on East End at this point, because I think we are still, um, still getting some money in there on our, um, Plan Con, that, you know, I, I know if we split it out and this and that, but I still think we're getting some funds there, I also think we're generating funds based on the tenants that are in the place, um, but I'll tell you what, you give me one percent and I'll put a, I'll put a sign on in four years.
You'll put what on now?
I'll put a sign on in four years, you give me one percent.
Well, I beg to differ with one thing, I didn't say you had to have it sold now, I want a sign on it.
Oh, Frank, I'll put a sign on there.
And a, and a-
And the sign I say, Tom Washington, Mayor, Mayor of East End.
Well, I could probably get somebody to print two hundred thousand dollars too, but that's not going to fly. A sincere, genuine commitment tonight to agree to sell that and delay taking the-
Frank, I would not be buying it in any way whatsoever. It would require the authorization of the board, which, you know, can't do that right here and now, between the six of us.
So it, a sincere effort and a promise to do that does not fly, Ross. I didn't say a legal binding document. I said a sincere, concentrated effort.
Quite frankly, I don't, I don't think it's Mr. Washington's decision, it's the board's decision.
Well, let's vote on it then.
Well, I mean, you know-
We're not on-
It's not an item on the agenda.
Yeah, it's not an item on the agenda, and I think we need to focus-
Promise to put it on the agenda next block.
Is what I said, is a sincere-
Put it on the agenda.
All right, and to move forward with it. I didn't say it had to be sold this month, if anybody bothered to listen.
I just think it's absolutely crazy that we started this conversation based upon the fact that, and Frank, you started this discussion-
Absolutely, I take-
That, that the schools aren't performing to some standard, and now we're moving into selling East End, and what we're supposed to really be doing is passing a budget.
No, we're supposed to be coming up with money, and to be quite honest with you, the reason I quit commenting on what the schools were doing was because nobody was genuinely answering what I said. I never commented that our students weren't succeeding on the high end, by all means. I didn't say we weren't doing well, I didn't say the teachers weren't doing well, I think they're handicapped. But somewhere what I said got lost in what was going on. Totally lost.
Okay, where I, where I, where I disagree with you, Frank, is where it gets tied in to the budget and the taxes. Because I just, I think we're, I think we're talking about apples and oranges.
Yeah, I, I do too.
President, I think we get a motion on the table, and it's really supposed to be about village.
Right.
Yeah.
And I'll agree with you, Ross, I'll give you that one.
Okay.
So where, where we're at is, I heard that, um, an idea of could we somehow, this is what I'm making a recommendation to the board, is that we somehow, then, if we can't do zero, right, we, we're saying we're turning down a zero budget increase, then can we somehow meet in the middle? Then either take a hundred thousand from the fund balance, and either take a hundred thousand from either raising the taxes, if you don't want to do raising the taxes, then, then you approve this with the fact that the administration will go back and find the other hundred thousand to make the budget balance.
Or does somebody want to make?
That way I can, we, we can at least do that.
I'd like, I'd like to move that we do half the tax increase and take a hundred thousand from the bu, from the fund.
Are you saying, take it to point two five?
That's my motion, though.
His motion.
Is his motion a stick of the motion?
I would second the motion.
With the appropriate calculation, appropriate millage.
Yes.
So take that to half the millage?
Point two-five-five mil increase. Come on, Guy, get your calculator, let's roll, come on, we're moving here. Slide rule, something?
And a hundred thousand from the fund.
That's not that easy.
Hey, so, so that I get, get a motion that Lisa can hear clearly and we can document it properly, um, I'm going to ask the President, or Jeff, Jeff, would you please state, state it, please?
Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District, um, balances the budget by taking one hundred thousand dollars from the fund balance and increasing taxes the appropriate amount to fill the gap.
So that's just, that's slightly different than what you said before. Well, I think it was two hundred and four thousand, so-
Okay.
A hundred thousand is not quite half.
All right.
Which one is it?
Hundred and two thousand?
Two thousand.
Okay. And I stop.
Any questions or comments on that? Do we, take a roll call again, Lisa, please?
Mrs. Spaliva?
No.
Ms. Burnett?
Yes.
Ms. Lynch?
No.
Mr. Frather?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Schrecks?
No.
So basically, we've got the two ends and we can't even get more than three votes in the middle, I don't know what to do.
Well, I thought the motion was not what Mr. Washington proposed.
He didn't propose, Jeff proposed it.
He made the motion, but what Mr. Washington proposed-
It was different.
It was different.
Yeah, it was different, I would support what Mr. Washington did, said. Well, that's all right.
Okay, so whatever I said, let's vote on it now, everybody's in agreement.
I don't think everybody is.
Everybody's in-
I don't think everybody is in agreement, but what you proposed was to, uh, if I remember correctly, you proposed to take a hundred and two thousand dollars out of the fund bu, balance, and then you would go back and, and make up the difference in the budget.
Yes.
Right.
And I didn't move that-
But we already approved the budget.
And I didn't move that because I wouldn't vote for it.
Would have to go back, because we already approved the budget. But we would have to go back.
Madam President, if somebody would make that motion and pass it, then we would have to make a, a motion for reconsideration of the budget-
Okay.
In order to match your millage, uh, increase of it. That you're going to reduce your budget by a hundred and two-
Hundred, two thousand, okay, all right. So that's what I had recommended, Jeff, put, put a motion on and try to pass that one, so.
Does anybody want to make a motion with that? I can re-clarify it once again of what he said, but I don't agree with it myself, so I am not going to make the motion. But the motion was, if anybody would like to make the motion, was to take a hundred and two thousand dollars out of the fund budget, and then we would go, then Mr. Washington and his team would go back and make up the difference, pulling it out of the budget, and then we would have to go back and redo the budget. So, does anybody want to make that motion?
Yes. How do I say it? That was a long run-in sentence, okay. So I would like to make a motion that we do not raise taxes, we incre, we-
Take a hundred and two thousand?
Take a hundred and two thousand out of our fund balance, and Mr. Washington and his team go back and find the funds necessary, take off the budget and, and balance the budget.
Okay, so that's a motion, do we have a second for that?
Second.
Melissa, second. Questions or comments? What did-
Uh, I just want to clarify in regards to the millage, because that's what we're dealing with here, so therefore the millage did not change-
Change.
At fifty-two point six one and ninety-two oh two.
Right.
So that would be the effective millage, you're reducing the budget, but the millage doesn't change, uh, because you did that.
All right, so actually, which-
Paul, do you want to incur that the millage rate would be fifty-two point six one and ninety-two point oh two as part of your motion?
Fifty-two, what is it?
Fifty-two point six one for Crawford County and ninety-two oh two for Mercer County.
Okay, and so adding to that, it would be fifty-two point sixty-one mil for Crawford and ninety-two point oh two from Mercer County.
So you have a motion again with that, and Melissa, are you going to second that again?
Oh, I second again.
Questions or comments? Right, let's take, do one, two, Ross?
This puts the ball into the court of our administration.
Absolutely.
For a hundred thousand?
Mm-hmm. Hundred and two thousand.
Before I do that, I want to hear from the administration as to their feelings about that.
Oh, our-
How easy is that going to be?
Well, it's not easy, Ross, and I can tell you exactly what it's going to be, and so therefore, one of the first things I'm going to do, I'm going to make an amendment to Schedule B, I'm sorry, I'm going to make an amendment, amendment to Schedule B, I am going to, at this point, ask us to pull off the English teacher that's being approved, and we'll have to go back and look at our numbers.
Yeah, that's what I thought, thank you. So this is what I was concerned about, now we're getting into, you know, education.
But we have a first and a second, we need to vote, so Lisa, let's do a roll call again.
Mrs. Spaliva?
No.
Ms. Burnett?
Yes.
Ms. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Frather?
No.
Mr. Rose?
No.
Mr. Schrecks?
Yes.
Motion does not carry. So we are still back at, truly, we're back at the millage, really, is what we're still voting. If I would kind of capitalize everything, because it's gotten a little convoluted. We've looked at not raising it at all, and that didn't go. We've looked at initially raising it to point four nine, and that didn't go. We've looked at going half of that millage with making up the difference in the fund balance, and that didn't go. And then just recently, we looked at keeping it the same again, not changing it, and going into the fund balance, and then possibly relooking at the budget again. So that's summarizing what options we've looked at so far.
May I ask the board a question? Uh, Ross, I'll direct this one directly to you, because I understand exactly why you feel the way you feel. If I was able to move that one or two out of supplies, which have lesser impact on kids, can you support a motion that way?
My hesitation is because you guys have already gone through this whole process, you have already cut and cut to get us to the point where we were, and I know that it's not just remove some things we don't really need, if we didn't really need them, we would have cut them a long time ago, that's the process we continually go through. I'll do it in the spirit of compromise, although I want to say, I'm really disappointed in the spirit of compromise in that it seemed to me that the appropriate compromise was to go half and half, taxes and fund balance, that to me was a compromise. Now this is, I think, just, just getting something passed that doesn't help the, the school district much. If that's what we have to do, to pass the budget, I'll vote yes, and I'm really disappointed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ross.
So I'm asking someone to make a motion that will change from the fact that, when Ross asked me, the first thing I looked at was, um, programming, we will stay away from programming and look at supplies, uh, which will not have a direct impact on students. So if someone can make a motion, and hopefully we can try to pass it that way.
I so move.
Thank you, Ross. We have a second, I'm running the meeting now.
I don't understand, first of all, I don't understand what we're, what the motion is, so can you-
It's the same as last time.
It's the same as last time, but he asked me a question.
So he's, so with Clint, so right now on the millage, what we're voting on is that the millage-
Fifty-sixty-one.
stays the same, and- And we're taking a hundred and two out of the fund balance and a hundred and two going into the budget, which, which we'll have to go back to.
Subject to supplies.
Subject to supplies. Okay, so we have a first with Ross, and we need a second.
A second.
So first, Ross was first-
The first and Jeff is second.
So Ross was first and Jeff's second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay, Lisa.
Mr. Shrek?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Freiter?
Yes.
Ms. Lynch?
Yes.
Ms. Burnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Slippa?
Mine is a yes, but it's a very, very, very reluctant yes. So motion carries unanimously.
At this point, we need a motion for reconsideration regarding the budget.
Who would like to make that motion?
So move.
This...
That's what I do. Just turn off $2,000 off that.
But don't we need a second to reconsider or not?
To a four. First, we're supposed to move to reconsider.
Yeah, we have to, we move to reconsider first, and we need a second for that, correct? All right.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now you need to re-read that with...
Okay. Resolve that the board of school directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the adoption of 2019 and '20 general fund budget in the amount of $63,492,000, $63,492,558, as presented, as will be presented on PDE 2000. Does the number on that change? Is it 2029 now, or is it still 2028?
2020.
Still, still PDE 2028, which will be made part of the minutes, and I so move.
And I need a second.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Back to you, Jeff.
Insurance coverage. Resolve that the board of school directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves...
I'm sorry, you're right. Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. I'm sorry.
Hereby approves the district's insurance coverage for the 2019-'20 school year as quoted by First National Insurance, and I so move.
And I need a second, please.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Fund transfers. Resolve that the board of school directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the business manager to make general fund budget transfers for the purpose, purpose of closing out various funds of the district for the fiscal year 2018 and '19, and I so move.
And I need a second.
Second.
Listen. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Act 511. Resolve that the board of school directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves to enact a 1% earned income tax and a 1% real estate transfer tax for the fiscal year 2019 and '20 in conformity with Act 511, and I so move.
And I need a second.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Capita tax. Resolve that the board of school directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves to enact a $5 per capita tax for the fiscal year 2019-'20 in conformity with Section 679 of the Public School Code of 1949, and I so move.
And I need a second.
Second.
Listen. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Schedule pays. Resolve that the board of school directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following schedule pays, number 425 for athletic supplies and number 426 for copy paper, and I so move.
And I need a second. Buddy?
Second.
Thank you, Frank. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Move on to personnel. Be it resolved that the board of school directors of Crawford Central School District hereby reappoint Timothy M. Senet as solicitor for the 2019-'20 school year at the rate of $105 per hour, and I need a motion.
So moved.
Jeff? And a second?
Second.
Ross? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you.
Acknowledgement that under the terms of Section 1108 of the school code, the superintendent has notified the secretary of the board that the following persons have received satisfactory ratings for his or her sixth semester of employment and has thereby gained the status of professional employee and will tender a professional employee contract beginning with the first semester of the 2019-'20 school year, and they are Cheryl M. Andre, Liza A. Hovis, Clifton G. Roberts, Robert J. Sharon, Sharon Nikowski, Stephanie M. Matthews, Richard S. Stoff, Amanda J. Fulmer, and Morgan E. Pierce. Be it resolved that the board of school directors of the Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following stipends for the 2019-'20 school year, James Schriock, Student Information System Coordinator, Instructional Support Center at $7,000, and Jacob Scott, Dean of Students, Middle Area Senior High School at $8,500, and I need a motion. Melissa? And a second?
Second.
Jeff? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Be it resolved that the board of school directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves Renee Kaiser as principal at Cochrantham Elementary School with all benefits associated with the Act 93 agreement at Step 2 with a salary of $101,741 with an effective date of August 12, 2019, and I need a motion.
So moved.
Rose? Second?
Second.
Paula Jo? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Be it approved that the board, be it resolved that the board of school directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following personnel schedules, approval of Schedule A, B, D, E, G, H, and I, and I need a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Jeff. And a second?
Second.
All of them? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Washington.
Thank you, Madam Chairman President. I just want to let the board as, know, as we do always, we will continue to have a few interviews throughout the summer. We've always put those people on and retroactively approved them in August since, since we don't have a July meeting. And also, I just wanted to make the board aware that one of the tenants over at East End has asked us for an additional room. There should be no problems. We do have a classroom over there. With your permission, I'll have our solicitor do an addendum to the lease so that we can add the square, my, square footage to our current lease, and in August, we will allow them to go ahead and use that room. And I'm told it's gonna be more of an office space than it is going to be children using the room. So I just wanted to make the board aware of that. I just want to say, there was a lot of things that went on tonight, but this is what we do. This is what democracy is, and this is how we go back and forth. Although it may have been spirited and it has been, but I want to thank everybody for what you did. We will go back, we will look at those, those areas. It is not what we wanted, but we will make it work because we have to do the best for our, but we have to do the best for our students. Congratulations to Renee Kaiser, who will be joining us full-time, and, and she did a great job as an interim principal down in Cochrantham, and so therefore, we welcome her to the family full-time. And the last thing I want to say, Madam President, is that it is sad to say, but it is happening. Dave Dixon, this will be his last meeting with us. Dave has done a fantastic job for us for the past 12 years, and has just been an outstanding person. We built it the grounds. We hate to see him go, but we've had our private conversations, and I've talked to him about, hey, I'd never stand in the way of anybody who wants to go, except he's not my wife, so I, you know. But we wish him the best, and Dave, and everything you've done for us, we know you're gonna do well. And you have done far better, so we're still gonna show up on the phone, no big deal. If we have questions, we'll still show up at the phone, there's no big deal about that. Madam President, that's my report.
All right. Thank you. Any other board comments?
Dave's been here maybe a little longer than I have, and it's certainly been 12 pretty darn good years. It's a little sad that we actually saw eye to eye most times, which the only place around here we see eye to eye, so, no. You've done a heck of a job, Dave. Not only on building, it's been on transportation, and it's been an absolute pleasure.
Thank you. I don't say a whole lot, but, you know, I've worked with this board, I've worked with, you know, other boards the entire time, and I do appreciate the support and things that we've had over the years. Prior administrators, prior CMT members, principals, I mean, it's a, it's a working relationship. It's been hard work. A lot of give and take in trying to, to logistically put, put some things in place. The only thing that I, I guess, goal-wise, that I did for me is I, I wanted to come into a situation and make it better, you know, from what, from what I, I started with, and that was the, the goal that I had, and I think that I've accomplished many things that way, and it's not all just me. It's, you know, my maintenance crew, my custodial, you know, transportation contractors, everybody here, so it's not just me, it's, it's everybody blending in. So I, I do appreciate the support that I did have received, so thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Any other board comments? Right? And be it resolved, be no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 6:33, and I need a motion.
So moved.
Jeff?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye.